We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:01.
I turn this to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which stands our nation under God, in his name, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. I'm going to call for a motion. Oh, hi, Lenny. Call for a motion for the approval of agenda, the agenda with one addition. We're going to add board resignation right after the approval of the agenda. Okay. Anybody want to make that motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda with the addition.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Josh seconded. Any discussion?
I'll get it right here.
All in favor? Okay. Is Lenny voting as a member?
Yeah, I have an issue here for a minute.
Okay. Do you want to?
All in favor of the agenda with the alter of creation of the resignation?
Yep, he's good.
Okay. So unanimous. Okay, so we have received a letter from Andrea that she, this will be her last meeting. Do we have to make a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Okay. I'll take, I'm looking for a motion to accept her resignation from the board.
I will do it regurgently.
And Josh in a second.
Second.
Steven, discussion? I'll start. Andrea, thank you so much for all of the work you've done all these years.
You have my number, so you can call your questions.
And standing out, standing out there in the freezing cold when our eyelids froze that one time. So, and anybody else would like to make any comments?
Being, being board chair is not easy. So, we appreciate the service for these years. It's a hard job.
Okay. All in favor?
I don't know if I vote.
Reluctantly unanimous. Okay. Okay, public input and announcements. Are there any public who would like to? Nobody? Okay. Well, I guess we won't discuss public comments. Okay, so approval of the minutes from 3:5:25. Anybody want to make a motion to approve the minutes? That was our reorg meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. And second, anybody? Steven? Okay. Any changes or discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes? Opposed? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I messed up.
No, you're okay.
You can do each one.
Yeah. I'd do them separately. That makes sense.
Was 3:5, though, was that the special meeting or?
No.
No, we haven't.
We don't even have that yet.
Okay, we don't have that. Sorry.
This was already warned when?
Gotcha. Okay. Minutes from 2:27?
And that was annual meeting.
And that was the annual meeting? Okay. Motion? Steven? And second, Kim? Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Okay, unanimous. All right. Clarendon update. Summer, welcome.
All right. I'm Summer. I have a short presentation for you. All right, so I wanted to start with my goal for the year. I wanted, set to build and maintain collaborative relationships, and this would be with staff, students, and families. Some of the ways that I have worked on this, I try to be as available as possible for staff, for students, and families. I have an open door policy. Staff are always welcome to come into my office. I try to always be, if I have something going on, stop, be ready to listen. With emails, I try to get back as quickly as possible. Students, both in, if they need to see me in a behavior way, or if they just need to talk, or want to meet with me, I try to make myself available always. And families, if I have phone calls, I try to call them back before the day is over. Emails, get back to them also before the day is over. Like I said, I have an open door policy, and I think the staff feels pretty comfortable with that. People are in and out all the time. One of my main goals was to have frequent visits to the classroom. Number one, selfishly, I was a teacher forever, and I love the classroom, so it was really important for me to go in there and to see the kids. It's the best part of being here. So, I do go into the classrooms. I would say I am in each classroom at least twice a week. Sometimes it's just for a couple minutes, and sometimes I sit down and join in in what they're doing. And then I do lots of mini observations, just trying so that, trying to know what's going on in the classroom, so I can support teachers and students the best. That, again, being visible, I try to be all over the building. Haven't been so great in the winter going outside, but I get out to recess, I'm in the cafeteria, wherever I'm needed, pretty much, I'm out and about. I send home, or send out weekly staff updates every Thursday to let everyone know what will be happening the next week. And then I do a family update each week also, which has what we'll be, what we'll be doing for the week, and a little blurb about what has taken place, and any important information that we have to share with families. And then, three climate surveys. So, we completed the first one in October. I sent one to families, one for students, and one for staff. I just sent out the second survey. It is the same survey each time, and I'm just looking to see if we see any trends or anything changing. With the staff, I want to see how they're feeling, what can I do to make things better. With students, the same things. And I really like to hear from families, so that I know how they're feeling about how things are going. School goal is to evaluate the effectiveness of instruction by conducting frequent, formal, and informal observations, and providing timely feedback on instruction and student learning. So, how? Like I said, I visit classrooms quite a bit. Obviously, I am not doing a mini or a formal observation every time. I don't want teachers to feel like every time I go in, I'm observing them, and I don't think they feel that way. But I do have lots of conversations, giving feedback, and the teachers ask me questions about things. We have a pretty open relationship and dialogue back and forth. And then our formal observations also, where I meet with the teachers after, and we discuss all the wonderful things that were happening, and then some things that we can work on also. Things for me to consider for next year, is a better way to communicate with the staff after visiting for mini observations. I have done a few different things. I've had quick conversations, I had a little form that Jen Galusha shared with me, that she uses at TinMeth, which is really great too, but I haven't been consistent enough with it, so that is a goal of mine to work on. All right, so behavior, non-negotiables. When I began in the summer, I invited teachers or any staff members to meet one-on-one with me, just so I could get an idea of how they felt like things were going at Clarendon, what's amazing, what are things that we might want to work on. And the same thing I kept hearing was, we need to get a control, get some control on the behaviors here. We have some hands-on stuff, and just some disrespectful language. So, I created a non-negotiable plan, basically. And on the first day of school, we all met together with the students, and we talked about what a non-negotiable was. We said that hands-on, inappropriate language, so swearing, sexualized language, things like that, and disrespectful language, like, no, I'm not going to do that, or even disrespectful facial features, those kinds of things to staff members, that those were going to be non-negotiables. It's really cute, because we have our kindergartners up through saying, that's a non-negotiable, we can't do that. So, what we came up with as a plan was the first time, so I have a sheet that I made, and on that it explains that their child had a non-negotiable incident, and that, and then there's a spot to write down what happened. The first time that happens, the non-negotiable letter is sent home, parent signs it and sends it back. Second time, I make a phone call. And a third time, it's a meeting with the student, the family, and myself, and sometimes the teacher. If, I have some students who have three, but one was like in September, one might have been in December, and one now, we don't do a meeting, because that, but if they were happening back-to-back, we would have a meeting. We did a couple of that, and it really did seem to help. So, I looked at our data, and so month by month, in September, we had 43 non-negotiable papers go home and returned, which is great. The families have been so great about returning them. In October, we had 30. November, we had nine. December, three. January, eight. February, one. And March, three. So, I feel like setting this in place, and everybody having the same language, the staff, the students, the families, that we have seen, that it's just really, it's worked. And this is not to say that we don't have some other behaviors, some major behaviors that have happened that we've had to deal with, but this is for our non-negotiable behaviors. This is just the decrease that we've seen, so I think that's really great. Our staff has also been focusing on attendance. As a staff, we feel, we have used our PLC meeting time to focus on attendance. We've created documents that we have sent home with families. They have been, we've sent home different documents for, for like preschool and kindergarten level, and then our K through four, and then fifth and sixth more of like middle school, how attendance really affects the kids academically. So, attendance can have both a positive and a negative effect on students. We did invite families to join us for a dinner and a presentation, and it wasn't well-received. We didn't have anybody, so I sent home something to let me know that they were coming, so we'd have enough food, and we did not have anybody sign up for it, which was a bummer. So, we did not have the event, but the plan is that for open house next year, we will plan to discuss attendance during that time. And I have a presentation that I'm going to shrink down, so that it's only a few minutes, just touching on the key points, so that we can share that with families. Ways that we are supporting students with low attendance rates, sending home information about how attendance affects a child's academic growth, sending home letters stating the number of days that have been missed. I make phone calls to parents to see, how can I better support you? How can we get your kids here? Also, just to let them know we are paying attention. And then, if it's really extreme, we do home visits, just try to see how we can support. I was really excited to bring winter sports with skiing back to Clarendon this year. It was really well-received. At first, the kids were like, we don't want to do this, a little annoyed with me that they had to go. They all loved it by the end. They were so proud of themselves. They, it was fifth and sixth grade that went, K to four went skating, fifth and sixth went skiing. Financially, that was the best for our school. And they just, you can see in the pictures, they loved it. It was, it was so exciting. Paula and Tracy did so much up there, just making sure everything was organized and running smoothly, so excited about that. And then, just our teachers makes CES the best place to be, and some fun pictures here. This is our PBIS assembly, where the students are picked for a character trait of the month. Our robotics club, we have a few kids in that, and they went to the state competition, and they did really well, so that's really exciting for CES. This picture, I am with the kindergartners. We do the golden spatula. We felt like lunchtime was getting a little loud and chaotic, so we have our golden spatula, where we pick one class from the primary, and one class from the older kids each day, and they win the golden spatula for being the most respectful, cleaning up around their space. If they get five golden spatulas, they get something special with me. So, I did pizza and ice cream with kindergarten one day. So, that's really fun. That's it? You have any questions?
So, the first thing is about attendance, and does it seem like it's a small group of kids that are not coming, or just a whole population problem?
Yeah, so the more we dive into, it is definitely a smaller population that have really low attendance rates. But we do have quite a few kids who are at the at-risk level, so we just really want to work on that. And I don't think, I don't think families know how much kids miss, when they miss a couple days of school here and there, or even like one day a month, if you look at it, how many hours they miss academically. So, but yeah, it's a small pocket of like severe absences, but we do have quite a few who are at risk.
Interesting thing that, I think when I figured this out, it kind of blew my mind. When people talk about chronic absence, it tends to get defined as 10%. That's one day every two weeks, which is, you know, seems like, oh, that's no big deal, right? That's chronic, when you read the literature, when you look at people doing studies on that, so.
Yeah, but it is a big deal. I mean, one day every two weeks, if you think about missing an entire day of instruction, and then you, the next day you go, and you have to try to catch up, and you can't catch up with that, you know, so it's just like, you're always trying to play catch-up. Did you have a question?
I'm just curious, what are the, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Which one, me?
Yeah, sure, go.
I was just curious, when you dug into it, how many of those absences do you feel are due to transportation? Because I know, like, especially in a rural area, the kids miss the bus. You know, they may not have another way to get to school.
Yeah, so that's not really a big issue here. We have one family who says that transportation is an issue, but they do have a bus that goes right where they live, so they do have that. But we don't have any other students whose parents are worried about transportation.
Well, my question was just a more generalized version of that, which is, what are the reasons that families are giving for their kids missing school?
You don't get, for the kids who are really chronic, we don't get reasons. The parents typically don't even reach out to us, so we don't know why they're not here. There are families that I've called and emailed multiple times, and we just don't hear back from them. But, you know, those, those chronic ones, those are the people we don't hear from. But typically, we hear from families, and, you know, we have some kids who say they're sick a lot, and might not actually be that sick to come to school, but I think, you know, a lot of it is how much importance does the family put on education, right? And, okay, yes, you have a cold, but you can go to school, you're okay. So, I think that's a big piece of it.
The other, another question I have is, so generally, we have pretty new principals in the entire district, and I'm wondering, just like, how, you mentioned Jen, but like, how much are you communicating with the other principals in the district?
Jen and I communicate a lot. I think she's probably been my person that I talk with a lot. But, you know, we meet every two weeks as a team, so we talk a lot then. I don't talk a lot with the high school, just because it's not really relevant to what I'm doing, but yeah, we definitely talk with each other, and I got some questions off of them, and they ask me questions. And then Jody and Brian and Coral are amazing. They've been super supportive, so I feel comfortable. Anytime I have a question, I can ask, and I never feel like it's a silly question, so, yeah.
Just thinking, like, that's really impressive about the non-negotiables, and how far you all have come, and the shared language is really interesting to hear. Is that something that other elementary schools are also implementing? Do you know?
I don't think so at this point. I think I've mentioned it at our leadership team meetings, but I think it sounds a little like hokey if you don't know about it, but it's actually working. And like I said, all the staff, we have the same language, and the kids, I mean, they are kindergartners, saying, that's a non-negotiable, you can't do that, you know. So, I think having that common language is really great, and I think each school has their own thing that they do, yeah. Yeah. Hi.
You said you do, you're doing weekly visits to the classes. Does that include foundations program as well?
Oh, yeah. I go over to the foundations program all the time.
What's your, like, I'm, we're going to hear more about foundations, I think, later, but what's your, I don't know what your administrative relationship is with foundations. It's part of?
Same as everyone else.
Same with the staff?
Yeah. Yeah, I consider them just exactly the same. They're just, I just have to walk over to them.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I'm in there all the time. The kids all know me really well. I work with the staff a lot. Yeah, they're the same, they're just outside, they're in a different building.
Anybody else have any questions?
One thing, one thing I want to highlight, and we did this in personnel committee right before this meeting, which I think is really neat to identify, personnel committee was setting goals for their committee, and reviewing their goals that they had set last year, and looking at timelines, and thinking about the best way to frame their work. And then we just heard from Summer, not only is she sharing with you her personal goals as a leader, which I think is pretty powerful to do in public, but she's talking about her school goals, and how they were informed by her staff, and we're looking at ways we can measure progress on those goals. And I think something that, that makes me proud about the district is that focus on setting goals, coming back to them, making sure that we're taking steps to make progress, and we're measuring that. You heard from Summer that not everything we're doing is working. She identified a couple of places where next year, they're going to go back to the drawing board and figure out some better ways to do things, and I think that's, that's a powerful thing to watch happen. You know, nobody's perfect, but if we're all, if we're all setting goals and working and checking in on progress, and willing to do that work together and in public, great. I think that's, that's a wonderful thing to see.
Great.
Thank you.
I just, and this may be a question for Brian. So, is attendance an issue at all of our elementary schools?
It's, I think it's fair to say that at every school, we have a segment, a population that is chronically absent.
But I think it's fair to say that at every school, in most schools, this is an issue around, through the whole country.
I think we looked, we haven't looked so specifically maybe for about a year and a half or two years, but when we looked really specifically, all our schools, that percentage of chronically absent, there wasn't an outlier. We were all about in the same place, believe it or not.
Does Lynn have a question?
I don't really know if he did or not.
Do you have a question?
I'm not quite sure.
I don't think he can hear.
Hear so much.
And now he's gone. There he is.
He tapped me.
Do you have a question?
Do you have a question?
No, I don't.
No, he does. Okay, all right. The voice from afar.
Yes.
And just for clarity of just like, right when we came back from COVID, absentee was like a huge issue in the whole district, and is that, but compared to that, it's significantly better than where we were?
Well, I wasn't in this district, but I would say yes.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, the effect of, like you said, you have a cold, you can come, and I wonder how many people are still reluctant to, if their kid's a little sick, to send them to school where they might get really sick. I, I mean, I don't know, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't think, we don't hear a lot of talk about COVID or anything like that anymore, so, yeah. You had another question?
Yeah, I was just interested to know, over the years, if you feel like the same kids are having acute?
This is my first year, so I, I do not know.
Yeah, and also, at what point, if there's non-attendance, do other, I mean, is there a child safety angle to this? I mean, is it reported to any of the authorities?
Yeah, absolutely. I've done a home visit with Joe Hoffman, the SRO.
Because they're required to come to school, right?
Yes, they are. Yeah, so, and if it gets to a certain point of unexcused, we fill out affidavits and things like that. But the home visit, that would be, I wouldn't go by myself, I would go with Joe Hoffman. So, there is like a police presence, and, yeah. But I can't answer the other question, because this is my first year.
Okay, thank you, Summer.
Thank you.
Okay, oops. Always forget that I have to, kind of, okay. F26, so is this a policy?
This is, I'll explain why it's F26. Coral's going to give us some updates.
Okay. Oh, you're going to get to talk about restraint and seclusion.
Yeah, we have a policy on restraint and seclusion that is, I'm pretty darn sure it's one of the ones that follows the SBA model policy, and one of the pieces of that is a requirement that we report annually on how things are going with restraint and seclusion. It's a good thing for folks to be aware of.
Okay, great. So Coral, you're on?
Yeah. So, just a little bit of history for you. We have a policy on the use of restraint and seclusion in schools. Our policy was adopted back in 2017, and as Brian just said, the policy does follow the SBA model. So, you know, annually, I, I come to you and just report to you on our implementation of that policy, and sort of let you know how things are going and what might be needed. So, that's, that's why I'm here tonight. What I usually like to do is just give you some very basic statistics on what our district sees as the number of restraints and seclusions in schools. The first thing I want to point out, though, to you, is that our district pretty staunchly prohibits the use of seclusion. It is not a policy or a part of the law that our district embraces. I don't think we really ever have, so far as I can recall. So, while seclusion is, is a term within the policy, it is, it is prohibited here. So, and there's, there's some history on that, but the long and short of why that is, seclusion psychologically is known to be actually quite a bit more traumatic, if not dangerous, to kids than physical restraint. And I know that sounds odd in some respects, but you have to imagine that seclusion involves leaving a child in distress alone in a room to regulate and console themselves. And that can take as, as short of a time as a few minutes to hours. It is not a thing that as human beings, we should be embracing doing to one another, let alone children that are really in a period of distress and needing physical comfort. I won't, I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm not going to give you my philosophy, but just know that's, that is how our district regards the use of seclusion. It just is not a thing that we do. With regard to restraint, restraint typically, the policy does contain some actual verbiage to define what is meant by that, but the long and short of it is that physical restraint is a set of techniques that is used in a manner that we are controlling a child physically. There are very defined criteria for when school staff would enact a physical restraint. Basically, the bottom line is that the safety of the child and/or the people around the child has to be so jeopardized that there's no other way for us to maintain or ensure safety other than to apply our hands to the child. And again, when I say apply hands, what I mean is there's a very specific set of techniques that staff have to be trained in and certified to even be able to use. Couple things to be aware of as a board, we do not ever restrict or control a child's movement using a face-down or laying-down position. So, when you think of, say, like, police officers, for example, who maybe taught techniques where you see people lying prone on a ground with their hands behind their back, or something like that. These are not the techniques that we are even authorized to use. In my experience, in the very limited cases of restraint that I see, which are becoming more and more limited, which is an excellent sign, the very few cases of restraint that I see typically last seconds in duration, and I mean seconds. Typically, the reports that I see, the techniques are being applied usually less than 10 seconds at a time. So, usually, in the very limited cases that we've had, where staff have had to enact a restraint, it is less than momentary in duration. To give you some statistic on the number of restraints that we see? To give you some statistic on the number of restraints that we see, for this school year, I've seen two. And both of those events lasted less than seven seconds. So what that means is staff were able to help that child regulate in a way that they could immediately release the physical hold that they had on the child, which is, which is what you want. I would argue that if seclusion had been used, that would have gone on for a much longer duration. That tends to be the norm with cases of seclusion that, that I have read about. Our district uses a program called Crisis Prevention and Intervention, or CPI for, for short. That is our model for how we teach staff to be able to utilize the techniques that I'm talking about. But what I want to focus on first is that CPI, the majority of the program focuses on verbal and non-verbal interventions first and foremost. In fact, the restraint portion of the program is not even taught until the tail end of the training, which is on day two, within the last, you know, couple of hours of the training. So CPI is very heavy in terms of teaching staff how to verbally or non-verbally support students and de-escalate them, you know, 10 steps ahead of, of even having to go to any kind of physical management approach. So, so again, this is, this year is the fewest number of restraints that I've seen. I think last year, I was just looking up some numbers today. I think last year, we had like five for the year. So, I mean, things are, are going really well. You've probably, you know, seen headlines recently about other districts that are really grappling with this topic, you know, much more severely and significantly.
There was a Vermont Supreme Court case dealing with those.
Yeah, yeah, there's been, there's just been a lot of controversy around it. I am so thankful to be in a place where I can sit here and say, yeah, we don't have that. And I, I'm so proud of our staff, you know, for just the love and care that they give kids and, and for doing everything they can to, you know, help kids regulate and feel comfort when they're with us. That's what we would want. It won't surprise you, I don't think, that, you know, looking back the last few years, that when we have had cases of like restraint that have been applied, it's, it's most typically elementary level. So it's kids K to six, or, you know, pre-K, I think, is a, is a really different conversation. But it's generally children who are, who are in the K to six, you know, level of development. Very, I can't remember when the last time was we really had a restraint situation at the seven through 12 level. Part of that is because physical management of students at that level is contraindicated. And that is because those children often, they exceed the size that is, that is recommended. And again, children at the seven through 12 level, they just, they tend to have, you know, more coping mechanisms, or they're more prone to use verbal language as opposed to the physical acting out behavior. So, yeah, so the policy, you know, again, I'm pleased the report's fully implemented. I don't see any areas of the policy I would recommend changing. The policy mimics the State Board of Ed Rule 4500, almost word for word. So I really can't, you know, make any changes or recommendations for change to that policy at this point. It is working well. But if there's questions, I'm happy to, to talk more or answer those for you.
Anybody have any questions?
For the training, are there certain positions that require the training? And then are there other positions that are opt-in if you want to? And then who does the training?
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think any position in the district is considered an opt-in, for sure. We do definitely sort of publicize, you know, when the trainings will happen. And, you know, the, the theory is the more the merrier. The challenge with the trainings, though, is finding sub-coverage in the buildings. We have to make sure the buildings can still run, and so that's, that's a little more organization to that. But the more the merrier for the trainings. As far as your question about who does the training, so currently, we have a couple of trainers that are on the staff. Maggie Ains, our Assistant Director of Student Services, so she is one of our trainers. And then we actually have Emily Burlett over at the Foundations Program, who's another trainer. Emily actually just achieved certification in the Advanced Physical Skills part of, of the program. So she had to go for a lengthier, multi-day certification program down in New York to get her training. But those are our two trainers currently. Typically, you know, in like a normal average year, we, we sort of prefer to have three trainers just because of, you know, like ratio of trainers to the number of staff. But we're getting by with two currently, and different years, different people have emerged and said, oh, I, I'd like to try that or, or go for that. So anywhere from two to three is usually the number of folks that we, that we have.
Is this general teaching staff, or what folks are trained in, say, the-
Oh, yeah, that was the index. I knew, Josh, I knew you had some other question. I'm sorry. So, yes, so typically, we sort of prioritize the training of folks who are working in positions that, you know, are geared towards children that may have more challenging acting out behaviors. Like, for example, our Foundations staff. So those are our special education paras, special educator, that kind of thing. Those are folks, you know, that just as part of the nature of the job, we kind of, we want them trained and, and maintaining that training. But then, as we get into the, into the mainstream schools, special educators and school counselors, we tend to see, you know, having more frequent certifications and things like that, principals. But other than that, it's really come one, come all, the more the merrier. Classroom teachers, I think our trend is, you know, just thinking back, we don't tend to see as many classroom teachers signing up for the training. But I think part of that is that when you're, in the, in the occasions where you have a, a child who is acting out, the classroom teacher is usually going to be the person taking the rest of their class somewhere else, and then a, a response team of sorts is, is going to come help that, that one child re-regulate. So that tends to be, you know, kind of the norm, but the training is always open to teachers, classroom teachers, anybody, yeah.
So every time there is any use of restraint, it sounds like there is a report done.
Yes, there is a report done. So what happens is any time that, and even if it's for two seconds, even if it's for two seconds that a staff had to apply their hands in order to restrict or control a child's movement, there is, I think it's an eight-page report that has to be filled out. It's, it's, I mean, it's really extensive. That report, once it's completed, goes to the building administrator who reviews it. The parent and guardian or caregiver has contacted, the circumstances of the event are relayed to them. They get a copy of the full report. The child has to be screened by the school nurse, even if it was two seconds. And the whole premise of that is, you know, is there a mark on the child? Is there bruises or scratches? Was anyone injured? Is there any kind of follow-up that needs to occur? The parent, guardian, caregiver, they have to be given the opportunity for a meeting or a debrief if they would like. The report, the final, then comes to me. I then have to go through it and analyze it for certain criteria. I've historically also sent them to Brian, just, you know, so he, as superintendent, is really in that loop. And then from there, if certain criteria are met, an additional report then has to be filed with the Vermont AOE.
And Coral, correct me if I'm wrong, there, there's a trigger that triggers a report to me.
Yes.
But several years ago-
We could do it anyway.
Well, we said, just send them all to me.
Yeah.
You know, don't worry about meeting the criteria, send them all to me, because, gosh, wouldn't it be nice to know? And that was when we were hearing more in the news about elementary school that's got 100. And we were going, oh, maybe we should just be paying attention and all be on the same page. So I get them all no matter what, even if they are supposed to come to me or not. But then there are some that are triggered to go to the AOE if they meet some criteria that's even above and beyond what would make them come to me. Sorry, I interrupted you for that.
You know, I would just say, if we're, if we're in a situation where we have to put our hands on a child, it's a big deal. It's a big thing. It, it's a big deal, and it should, it should come with a lot of paperwork. I also would say that while I, you know, I don't love, you know, that there's, that the report is as long as it is, but what I will say is this, we shouldn't be taking the decision lightly to be placing our hands on a child for, for any reason. That's, that's a decision that comes with an awful lot of power. And so we shouldn't be using that power lightly. And so having that documentation is just really helpful. It also, you know, those reports are helpful just for tracking the child's needs over time. So, yeah.
Thanks for outlining that.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Is it your recommendation to continue that process, sharing with the superintendent for the incoming?
I, I would, I would think so, absolutely.
And I'll say, it is, from my perspective, a really small burden for me. The report's already put together too, so it's, I, you know, looping me in, I think, is a small burden for you. Is that fair?
It's an email.
Because it's done.
It's an email, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I think too, you know, just thinking of the role of the board, you know, it really helps to be able to communicate that information with you. I mean, let's think about the evolution of the Foundations Program, right? That, that all happened because of communication and knowing, like, hey, there's some needs that we want to address. So I, I think that having the superintendent be in that loop is, is really important.
Anybody? Anybody else? Thank you, Coral.
Anytime.
All right. Oh, we have, the next item is Board Committee Membership. The reason that was put on there was because we were going to ask that Andrea be put on Community Engagement Committee, but now we-
And we, we, knowing that you weren't at the last meeting and had some thoughts on where you wanted to be, we wanted to circle back while you were here.
Yeah, while you were here, but now.
Circle back.
Okay, but, so we are going to put that on probably the next couple of agendas as some of the-
Unless there's anybody else who just really wants to shuffle what they're on, there might be nothing to do tonight.
Yeah, I don't, we really, we really need Personnel.
I'd like to be on Personnel.
All right.
Okay.
I was going to, regardless of-
Okay, so.
In our weeks-
I'm just trying to, see, there were two. Gray was on five.
Not anymore.
We did clear that up right at the end of the meeting, I think.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so you're not on five anymore.
Nope, I'm good.
And I'm only on two.
And you're only on two. So we're going to add, we're going to add Sarah to Personnel.
So technically, per our bylaws, because we are out of reorganization, we need a motion.
We need a motion to allow Sarah to join Personnel.
Len has something too.
Oh, Len, what?
Go ahead.
Well, I'll make that motion to begin with.
Okay.
Great.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
Go ahead. Len.
I'm fine.
Oh, I thought you had to say-
He just wanted to make that motion.
But not about that.
It's about something else.
Okay, any other, and we'll continue to probably work on the committee assignments so that, so that we have even membership and enough people and we can have quorums.
And is it, when do we expect the Wallingford vacancy to be filled?
Do we want to call the, call the vote on Sarah?
Oh, yeah, let's call. Okay, all in favor? Okay, unanimous, sorry, thank you.
Really good reason to keep this on the agenda for 4-2, because we will have a new board member for 4-2.
I was going to speak to that, that that came up at the Wallingford Select Board meeting yesterday, day before yesterday.
And we officially have their recommendation.
Yes, their, a recommendation was made, so it's in our court, it just needs to get done. And there's a good candidate.
We'll have it on the agenda.
Len?
Just me again. I, I think it's, and I know you just put it on for the agenda for the next meeting, but I really think it's important that we look at those committees. And Carol, I know you talked about it tonight when we were in the Personnel Committee.
Right.
Of, you know, there's some committees that, that meet, once the negotiations are done, for example, they may not meet for two years, until the next time negotiations are out. So I think we need to look at the committees and how, as you said, Carol, we can combine them in a way that makes sense so that we have Personnel and negotiations, which are kind of linked, and is already linked, buildings and grounds and finance. So I, I just think we need to continue to look at that. That's all.
Yeah, Lenny, we, and then you mentioned that I thought it was a good idea to look at that during maybe our-
Retreat.
Summer retreat. And that way, we can look at the bylaws. Because I had thought that our bylaws said we could assign alternates, so people who weren't primary members. But if there wasn't a quorum and they were there, they could act as a member if they had been approved by the board. That is not in our bylaws. But I, I think I saw it in Robert's Rules, so I think that's why it was floating around in my brain. But that's another thing we can do, even, you know, we can do that anytime, really, add that to our bylaws if we follow the process for doing that. So, you know, that, those are things, why don't we think about that? And we're going to have this on our agenda next meeting, and maybe we could act on that. Okay, everybody good on that for now? Congratulations, Sarah. Enjoy.
Can't wait.
I can't wait. Okay, Food Service Contract Committee Membership.
Okay, so we are, we are in the process of a request for proposals for food service. Reminder that Mill River, Clarendon, and Wallingford all have contracted food services with the same vendor. That contract is going to be up this summer. So Stan has put together an RFP. It's published where it's supposed to be published. It's actually a pretty crazy process to do that work with the state. It is many, many pages of putting that together. Far more complex than any other RFP we would do here, believe it or not. So that is in process. Stan has an ask of some board members to be part of that process when it comes time to review. So I'm going to give you a couple of dates to be thinking about. March 26th, there is a, a scheduled walkthrough. This is part of the RFP process where if vendors want to come and ask questions and see the facilities, that they can do so. You can be part of that meeting with the interested proposers, but that's not a requirement that everybody who is reviewing these be a part of that. But that is happening March 26th at 10:00 a.m., if you're interested in that. Now, proposals are going to be due on the 18th of April. The week of April 28th, Stan is trying to put together a meeting of folks who are interested in reviewing all the proposals and sorting through that.
What was that date?
The 20, the week of the 28th. He has not set a time or date. He wants to get interested folks and then try and coordinate that time or date. So the week of April 28th would be the big piece of finding time to meet with a committee to review proposals. The plan would be to bring something to the full board May 21st. So the committee has some time if they meet that week of the 28th and they want to take some time and come back, review. They have time to do that. But Stan would like an initial meeting that week of the 28th. Now, it would, you know, Stan didn't say you can only be board members from Wallingford, Clarendon. I guess, you know, I guess your Shrewsbury and Tinmouth folks might have an interest in the high school too. So I think it would be reasonable to think about membership and maybe not just have Clarendon folks. maybe not just have Clarendon folks, because we're talking about Clarendon, Wallingford, and the high school. So you might want to think about who's interested in trying to come up with a balanced group of maybe three folks that could represent.
That's what I was gonna ask, how many members are you thinking?
You know, I think two or three, I think, would be fantastic.
Can I, can I ask a question?
I have a question.
Okay, sorry.
All right, Sarah then.
Dueling questions.
Sarah.
So, the person who has the contract now?
Yep.
Have they had it for a period of time, or is there typically-
They've been, ooh, I want to say it's been maybe five or six years with them, actually.
So they're having others, but not for a while?
Yeah, it's been a, it's been a chunk of time, yeah.
And it's the same vendor for all three schools?
It is the same vendor for all three schools, correct, yeah. And my understanding is they are interested and will be working on a proposal. I think Stan said we actually had about five vendors show interest.
So there are five, so there's other choices?
He seems to think that we're actually gonna get proposals from maybe three, because some of those vendors aren't quite as active in the area, but three definitely are. One is our current vendor, and then two others are active in the area. Yeah, so-
Okay. Who is our vendor now?
Gosh, they keep changing their name.
Oh, okay.
I think it, I think it's Lexington Independence. Okay. We, we've, it's interesting, because I think this is the third name that they've gone by.
It's the same.
Because they've been, well, some, some larger company buys them, and then some larger company buys them, so, yeah.
Kim?
Oh, I was curious if Stan was thinking of having any students on the team.
Great question. I don't, I think he reached out to principals to ask for staff? I don't know if he asked for students. I don't know, but I can, I can-
How is he joining? I can have him, sorry.
I know that was something we talked about, I'll, I'll, and I wonder if he can circle back with principals and make that request if he didn't yet, but I'll check with them.
Maybe our student rep wants to help find, say, a student rep would like to be part of that committee. If you let us know, you think about it.
Yep.
If we were on this committee and we wanted to review contracts, like, do homework, is that something we could ask?
What do you mean?
Just to sort of see what, you know?
Well, you would have to wait till proposals are-
Wait till the proposals come out.
And I think that initial meeting, the week of the 28th, is the, here are all the proposals, let's start reviewing. So, yeah, you would, you would be given that information to review.
Okay. Okay, so Kevin, Brian, what is the process for people joining the committee? Do they just send their names to Stan, or does the board have to approve it, or?
No, we can do that a little less formally. If you are interested, I think if anybody's interested tonight, it would be good just to kind of know. So Ned, you might be interested?
I'm definitely interested.
Sarah, you're interested?
That's my business.
Do we have maybe a Clarendon person interested?
Well, that'd be me.
Maybe, that would be you, maybe? Because Len's gone. Shrewsbury or Tinmouth?
I think if there's three, I wouldn't want to have too many.
Okay. So, so tentatively, Ned, Sarah, maybe we'll think about Clarendon, and we'll try and get something to Stan. We've got a little time for that, maybe-
I couldn't do the 26th, but I, after that, I, I just, that happens to be the one-
Be interested if we need somebody outside, but it sounds like you might have it covered, Carol, so.
Okay.
Um, hold on, Len has a question, but my laptop is almost dead.
Okay.
Here, I'll pull him up over here.
Hold on. Hold on, Len.
Sorry, I was slightly distracted.
Sorry.
Oh, you're fine until I go.
I've got two food service professionals on that.
And I don't know if you want to answer this question? Is the expectation that the contract will move?
I think, I think that's a safe bet, no matter what.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they're- So many, so many-
I feel like I'm on the Starship Enterprise.
Because they've asked us two times to raise their price.
Yes.
Outside.
I think it's a safe bet that the contract is going to be higher, yep, given the state of everything.
Do they just do lunch, or do they do breakfast also?
So here, here's what I will take back to Stan. I will take back that Ned and Sarah are strong yeses, that Kim and Carol, we're gonna think about what works when we get closer. Maybe we have another Clarendon member when we get closer too, and we'll figure that out. But I think having two folks is a great place to be, we'll see about the third. Okay. And if we get Len's question, great.
Len, turn your camera off.
He's stuck in the multi-person thing.
He's got a little glitchy.
There you go.
He's there.
Do you have a question, Len?
Is your volume down now?
No.
Thanks, Len.
After all that, no.
No. We were ready, all right.
And we've got a little time.
Len has asked in the past if students have input on the vendors.
Any other questions about the food service contract, or the food service contract committee? Anybody, anybody? Okay. Committee reports, personnel. Len, do you want to do a report?
Len, we're wondering if you want to report out on personnel.
I'd love to, but I guess you can't hear me.
No, we can hear you, we just can't see you, and that's-
My only question in terms of the food service was are students included? I'd just leave that out there. Okay. So for personnel, we met tonight, and we have a couple of contract issues. So, I have a resignation from Justin Bouvier, and I think folks have received that email, and so the Personnel Committee would like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Justin Bouvier.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
Questions?
Discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Just, just to add, I will be contacting him for an exit interview, so I'll be looking for some board members to help with that.
Okay, great.
And it's a screw, Len, too.
Yeah, so-
You can move on.
Okay. Next is coaching contracts for the spring. Kim has sent us high school, middle school, and elementary coaches, and I think you also received that, and we looked at those at, in the Personnel Committee, and we would like to make a motion to approve all of the coaching contracts as presented.
And is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Stephen, any discussion? It's a pretty full roster, so it looks good.
Make, make one note, there was a typo, there was somebody listed as an ultimate frisbee volunteer, they're actually a full coach.
Yes, they're ultimate volunteer. All right, all in favor? Building and grounds.
Uh, wait, excuse me.
Yep. We weren't done, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right. Our next meeting is April 2nd at 6:00. The other thing, and I don't know if it'll come up later, is the summer programs. We did not discuss it in-
Oh, you're right. You're right, Len, and I forgot about that one, too.
Also, Len, I just, because we switched things around with reorg, community engagement is set to meet April 2nd.
Ah, correct.
But I don't know how you all want to do that, if you want to-
I thought we set it way later.
No, yeah, no, I thought we set it for the second Wednesday, we were gonna go all the way.
Okay, great, sorry, that was just me then, I hadn't changed my calendar.
Yeah.
But we're all set, then?
Yeah, sorry about that.
But, but Len, good, good point, do you want to do the summer staff? And, you know, one, one thing I would preface by saying is, we never used to bring summer staff to the board, because summer staff aren't even under our master agreements. We felt like it made sense to bring summer staff, because we're bringing all other staff, so why wouldn't we? So these are like after-school employees, so not, not regular support staff or teacher employees. So we're bringing these really more for transparency purposes of knowing when people are being hired, less for the approval of the board. And we didn't, we didn't look at them actually in personnel. But Len, if you're comfortable, I, I'd recommend we just look at them now with the full board, if that's okay.
Yeah, and that, that's fine, I just, I had missed it.
Yeah, no, I, we, we all did.
So, and, as Brian said, in the past, we haven't, the Personnel Committee hasn't specifically approved the summer program, because it's sort of separate from the regular programs that we conduct. And I think Brian's right, it's, it's great that we're getting this, so that people understand, so the community understands that, you know, the board has at least looked at who's going to staff the summer programs.
And, and I could be misremembering, but the summer programs basically fill up, and we can't take any more kids, because we don't have additional staffing to, to support that?
Staffing is one piece, but actually, the site is another piece. We only have capacity at our site for a certain number of students, yeah.
And is that site here?
Uh, Clarendon, yes.
Ned, did you have a question?
Same question.
Same question, okay.
So we, we just ask for a motion to approve.
All right, a motion to approve the slate of summer staff.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Okay, second? Stephen? Okay, any more discussion about the summer staff? Are some of these at the high school, or is that a separate?
No, the high school does some stipended work in the summer that is, like, credit recovery kind of work, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? All in favor? All right.
You're good, Len.
Thanks, Lenny. Okay, policy. Do you want to talk to policy?
I think there was no meeting, right?
There was no meeting, so there's really nothing to report. Our next meeting, I think, is, what, April 5th? Just double-check.
8th, I think.
Is it the 8th? I'm just looking real quick here.
There you go.
Yes, it's 5:30 on the 8th.
Building and grounds, we'd like to-
Haven't had a meeting.
We have one coming, the 24th, right?
Coming fast.
Monday.
Monday, yep.
The only thing, uh, last meeting, I said that there, I think Len asked the question about a statewide building fund, and there is currently a bill that does not have a funding model, that they are trying to work on as part of it, because part of the, the SCOT Plan kind of glosses over the fact that if you, if you're moving a bunch of kids around, you're gonna need to build better buildings to do that, and that isn't included in that cost, so they're gonna try to find that. So, just last time I said I, there was, I didn't, hadn't seen one, there is one.
Okay. All right, community engagement, so I think we decided the meeting is that 2nd Friday, what's that date?
April 16.
April 16th, and it'll be 6:00 for community conversation, and 6:30 for, for the committee meeting. Now, one of the things we were going to, we talked about doing was having a discussion or highlighting that we would be talking about the cell phone policy, but policy didn't, wasn't able to meet.
Well, policy's meeting before that.
Before that, so maybe we'll put that as one of the-
Cell phone is on the, that's the number one item on the agenda for that meeting, so.
Okay, so, we might put that as the topic, as we put out.
I think having talking points for that would be really good.
Okay, well, policy, let us, get that to us.
I just think people are interested in that.
Yeah.
They'll engage.
Well, we could look at the, uh, we have the survey, so there might be some information from that that we could use to kind of start the conversation, possibly. Okay, negotiations, is that, who's the chair of that?
It's still, well, currently, there's no chair, because we haven't had a meeting.
Oh, okay.
But we're gonna have a meeting on the 25th?
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, next Tuesday?
3:00 p.m.
3:00 p.m., for the actual-
And that'll be reorg and do all that. Ditto for finance?
Yeah.
That meeting, go ahead, Stephen.
Yeah, finance, we'll have a, a meeting on the 24th, at 6:00 p.m. for reorg. Yep, we haven't had one since our last board meeting, but we do have payroll warrants, and accounts payable warrants.
Okay, go for it.
So we have accounts payable warrants, general fund in the amount of $471,586.62, general fund in the amount of $689, general fund in the amount of $31,668.88, ASP in the amount of $1,985.47, and lunch in the amount of $4,278.92, for a total of $510,289.89. We have a motion to approve these pay warrants?
Tell me.
And a second?
Okay, we have-
Josh, second.
And Ned, second? Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, and our payroll warrants, the date of March 14th, in the amount of $648,653.68. We have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Second? Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Excellent. That's all we've got for finance, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other legal business?
Ms. Bronson would like to talk.
I was gonna say-
Would you like to give us an update?
Do a very quick one.
Okay, that'd be great.
And then can he be on the agenda for next?
Add him to the agenda?
Yeah, typically, we do that at the Mill River when we're flipping between, yeah, so we can put that on next meeting, absolutely.
Don't know if you guys know, the upstairs, upstairs high school men's bathroom just got a second stall door, we've been missing it for about two years. We're very excited.
That's awesome.
We're all pumped, yeah. Yeah, it's great. This Saturday, well, this Thursday, and this Saturday, we're having, the Thursday's our home show for Stage 40, and this Saturday's our regional festival, hope you guys can make it. Thursday's is at 7:00, Tues, uh, Saturday's is three shows at 1:30, and then two more shows at 6:30. There's also Bistro coming up for the high school honors vocal ensembles, a week from Saturday. Hope you've got your tickets already, because the ticket sales closed today.
Nope. Done.
That's about it. Didn't have much to say today. Any questions?
Do spring sports start a lot, do a lot of them start up? Do you know, like, is it Monday?
Baseball, pitchers and catchers started Monday, but then the rest of them start Monday. Yeah. Great.
There we go.
Yep, so, speaking of sports, agenda building, we do have sports update on our schedule for next meeting, if that still makes sense, so that'll be a nice, maybe, update about how spring is starting off. We have our E1 audit up on the schedule, and I believe Stan's got audit materials, finally. It's taken a long time this year to get those back, surprisingly, but we have those. So we can do sports update, we can do fiscal audit update, we'll keep committee membership on, because we'll have a new board member, so we can get that person on some committees. We can do student update, Bronson, if you'd like to share some more on the April 2nd meeting.
Please.
And then we have final item, it's stacking up to be a chunk of stuff on this meeting, but our final item would be board goals. So that's our quarterly check-in on board goals, and we had made a note that we want to pay specific attention to teacher appreciation, appreciation week planning. That's a packed agenda, but I don't think any of those are actually huge ones, I think that'll put us to 9:00. Are there other things that we are thinking we need to do as well, April 4th?
When is, what is, when is teacher appreciation-
I mean, April 2nd, sorry.
Day or week?
Uh, in May, right? Teacher appreciation week is May 5th through May 9th.
Teacher appreciation week is May 5th through May 9th. So if you're starting early April having that conversation, you get at least one more board meeting to check in to make sure you got things where they need to be.
If I may?
Yes, sir. Lenny?
Please, really. And I don't know where this fits, and I'm not sure where we are, because I can't hear real well. Update on the superintendent search? Does that go on the next board meeting? Or, I mean, at some point?
Yep.
We need, I don't know if all the board members know where we're at.
Can I give a little update on that right now?
Yep.
So where we're at, Lenny, is we've offered a contract, the candidate has accepted it, it has gone to the state for a background check, so they have to do their own background check.
Right.
So as soon as that comes back, then we'll bring it to the full board to approve the contract, make the announcement, we'll put out a press release.
Elaine sent the draft of the press.
I, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, it's, we know, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a little premature for the board to act on it, right?
I'm not asking the board to do anything.
Right.
I'm asking that we let the board know that she accepted the contract.
Oh.
That's all.
Okay.
And now we have to wait until we get approval from the fire department.
She has accepted the contract.
And then we go to the contract stuff, but I think it's important that the board knows that she accepted the offer.
Okay.
That's all.
All right. Now they know.
And, and we can do, we can do superintendent search update on the 4-2 agenda, if there's anything we want to do additionally.
Hopefully, we'll hear.
It could, you know, it could be a two-minute update, could be a 10-minute update, but we'll have it on there.
Right, and if.
Yeah, I think it should go on the agenda, either we can button it up, or it's not buttoned up, either one way or the other.
Yeah.
I also think.
We can address it at the April 2nd, where we're at. And I apologize if people didn't know that she had accepted, but on the other hand, it's not a done deal yet, even though.
Well, I understand, I understand that. I'm not saying it's a done deal. I'm just saying it would have been nice for the board to know that she accepted the contract, that's all.
Okay.
And I think people on the committee, on the search committee, would have liked to have known that as well. That's all I'm saying. Okay? And then my.
People on the search committee got emails from Elaine. I thought they were included on those emails.
No, no, no. You sent that to me, and I sent them to the committee.
Okay.
So, my next point is, in terms of the press release, Carol, I'm assuming that you're taking care of that, right?
Right.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
I got an email about that.
Any other agenda items that people want to make sure are on for the next meeting?
Just clarification, are we going to be selecting our new Wallingford member at that meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Would it be recommended that the person?
Appointment of.
Be present at that time?
Yes.
Okay.
They, I think.
So will he get sworn in?
Reasonable, reasonable to get sworn in and be prepared to be at the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like?
So should they, but they can't be sworn in until they've been appointed, can they? Or can they?
No, they can't.
No.
That would be putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe make that the first agenda item?
He has to be, they have to be approved, and then he has to swear in.
Okay, so if it was the first agenda item, then they could get sworn in, then they could participate.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you, Greg, because I was forgetting.
Yeah, we don't swear.
We don't swear him in, though.
No, we ask.
It's the town hall. So basically, he just gets appointed at that meeting and then goes, like, the next day to get sworn in.
He would not participate in that meeting.
No, no, but I think it would be good, good to start getting up to speed by being at.
Okay, so he could just be here as a member of the public?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, that's clear for everybody?
You're right, it's going to be a busy meeting.
Yep. Board member appointment, thank you. I forgot about that, Greg.
Duh.
Okay, good.
So, Carol, I would reach out to him and tell him to be present.
Okay, yeah. I don't know if I have his email. You must have it.
I sent you it when I forwarded you.
Oh, you sent that letter. That's right. I have it. All right. Executive session? Anybody? All right. I think we are adjourned at 8:16.